Tuesday, August sixteenth, please stand for an invocation led by Chaplain Percy Harris, Mobile Fire and Rescue Department, and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us bow our heads. Our Father and our God, we come as empty vessels before full fountains with Thanksgiving in our hearts, knowing that you watch over us day in and day out as we slumber and as we slept, knowing that you saw fit to wake us up this morning to see another bright, sunshiny day, so we say thank you. Now, Lord, we just ask that you keep us in your keeping care as only you can. Ladies and gentlemen, would you join me? Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven, and forgive us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil; for thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory, forever and ever. Amen. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you would, please remain standing for a moment of silent prayer to keep all of our nearby neighbors in Louisiana in your thoughts and prayers, because as you know from seeing all of the media reports, they have just been ravaged by these awful storms and flooding, so please, if you would, in your own way, a moment of silent prayer for our neighbors in Louisiana. Thank you. All right, thank you.
President Gregory.
Here.
Vice President Richardson.
Here.
Councilmember Manzi.
Here.
Councilmember Small.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Daves.
Here.
Councilmember Rich.
Here.
Statement of rules.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good to see you here. As mentioned earlier, of course, the people in Louisiana are just going through a terrible time, and there are a number of efforts underway here in Mobile to provide needed supplies. Many of our media partners in the city have lists on their website that you can go to to see where there are places you can drop off. The Red Cross, of course, is one, the Junior League. There are a number of organizations and groups who are putting together truckloads of supplies to take over to Louisiana, so the easiest way probably is just to check on the media websites, and then we'll ask Marion if she would also take all of those lists and put something together for the City Council website as well, to give you another opportunity to find out what the needs are and where the drop-off points are. So if you would, think about that and just go check those websites. Today on our agenda, we have a couple of big items involving drainage. We always like to see drainage improvements throughout the city, and one we have on the agenda today is primarily thanks to some emergency funds from the Capital Improvement Program. We are borrowing from 2017 and using it in 2016 to get these projects moving. Many of those are citywide. We also have a couple of items on the agenda to work on Medal of Honor Park. We heard during our pre-conference meeting about the exciting renovation work at Medal of Honor, and of course Medal of Honor is, is it the city's largest, second-largest park?
Yes.
And this playground will really be something else. It's used by so many people throughout the city, so I know you'll be excited to see that when it gets done. Those are the primary things to talk about on the agenda today, but of course, as always, we want to make sure that you all know the council rules. If you have a cellphone or other electronic device, please turn those off. If you come to the podium to speak, you will have five minutes. At the end of four minutes, you will hear a buzzer, which is your indication to go ahead and begin wrapping up your comments. When you come to the podium to speak, give us your name and address for the record, and please address me if you have any questions or concerns, and I will ask the appropriate member of the administration or council to resolve that question at that time. Again, thank you so much for coming. Ms. Lambert.
Approval of minutes of August ninth.
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Communications from the mayor.
Okay, I think some of our folks are running a little late, so we'll just move on. Ms. Lambert.
Adoption of the agenda.
Some move.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Appeals. We have requests for waiver of the noise ordinance on November eighteenth on the central campus of Bishop State Community College, October twenty-seventh on Dexter Avenue, September seventeenth on River Forest Road, and September third Riverside Drive.
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Public hearing. Today is a public hearing to rezone property at eleven fifty-one Dolphin Street, southwest corner of Dolphin Street in Oakland Terrace, from R one and B one to B one.
This is a public hearing. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to speak to this rezoning, please come to the podium. Okay, with that then, the public hearing is closed.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council. Solomon Koger. Last name K-O-G-E-R.
All right, apparently he is not here.
Pastor Nathaniel Wilder.
Morning.
We greet you this morning in the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus the Christ. My name is the Reverend Nathaniel Wilder. I live at one sixty-eight Stanton Road in District One. I came this morning to make a plea with the council and the mayor that when you build the fire station over off of Springville Avenue, that you would include a community room for the Crichton Community Action Group, and we also have another group, the Tomerville Crichton Redevelopment Committee. We don't have nowhere to meet. We're roaming around from church to church, and if we could get a community room with that fire station, it would truly bless us. We have the action group here with us today, if you would stand up.
Yeah, stand up, please.
Welcome.
Yeah, welcome to our meeting.
And we so desperately need a place to meet, and if you could find it in your heart to convince the mayor to allocate the money, we would truly appreciate it.
Well, thank you for coming. I know Mr. Richardson has certainly been talking about this for some time as we begin building that fire station over there. I'm sure you want to respond.
Yes, I certainly appreciate all of you coming down today to demonstrate the need to have a meeting, a meeting room. I'm sorry that the mayor and his staff are not in here today to listen to what you all have to say. I would suggest that you all write the mayor and make that known, since he's not in here, unless you want to come back again next week. I wouldn't, I would just keep this going. I would just say that I know for a fact that it is needed. It's not that we don't have the funds, it's that the mayor sees, he does not see the need for it, and it's going to be up to the community to show the need.
Amen.
To demonstrate the need, and I commend you for coming down here today to demonstrate that you need the meeting room.
And we do.
And I would not let up. I would keep it going.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, and thank you all for coming. Good to see you.
Ted Smeltzer.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Ted Smeltzer. I reside at two eight one three seven Turkey Branch Drive in Daphne, Alabama. I tend worship at First Baptist Church in Mobile at eight oh two Government Street, and I do bring greetings from our church. I'm excited to be here today to share with you all that as an outreach of our church, I am starting a group called Sforzando. Sforzando is Mobile's newest community drum circle. I have some information for you all that will explain my vision and my hope, and rather than sit up here and ramble about it a whole lot, I thought it might be a whole lot more fun if we have a little demonstration this morning.
That's great. Demonstrations go a long way.
This drum is called a djembe. Djembe is an African instrument. They say this drum can talk. They say it can talk because you can change the pitch of it and talk to people. A lot of people ask immediately, when you have a drum circle, what will we do? So the main thing that we do is we would sit around in the circle, and we'll start with a basic pattern, and then as that pattern gets going, we go around the circle and we begin to improvise around it. Everyone would take turns having their own time to improvise. One of the beautiful things about a circle is that there's no beginning, there's no end, and so everyone is united, and when this starts to happen, really neat things happen, people with experience, people with no experience. It's a lot of fun, and it just takes on its own new life. The second demonstration I'd like to do really quickly, and I'm going to ask everyone to help, because it's a whole lot more fun that way. Councilmembers, if you'll just follow my lead.
All right. Here we go.
Keep going.
Are we supposed to clip or was?
Yeah, he said follow us.
Oh, okay. Keep going. Keep going. We're supposed to be doing this part. They're supposed to stop. We're supposed to do this. We're supposed to be doing this. Okay.
I'm making this very quick, obviously. Normally, we would take time to build these things. After that, I would pull this instrument out. This is a Native American instrument, originally made out of dried cactus and crushed rock. It's called a rainstick. We would discuss this instrument, and then we would discuss the different instruments that we have, drums, we might have shakers, tambourines, that type of thing. We would then discuss which instrument makes which sound and what part of the rainstorm we would emulate with the different instruments, and we play that game again on the instruments instead of using our fingers and our feet. That's just two quick examples of what we will do in a drum circle. We hope to meet on the first and third Mondays at First Baptist Church. We're going to have a kickoff event on September nineteenth. I'll invite you all to come be a part of it, and as soon as I get my five oh one C three status, I'll be in search of funds to help do this. I need at least fifteen or twenty of those djembes and other instruments that I'll be looking for, so thank you for your time.
All right, thanks, Ted. Good to see you. Yes, Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
I would just like to say that the Native Americans were able to communicate with smoke. They could just write, you know, in the sky with smoke what's going on, and nobody could top that. Then when the African-Americans here, the Africans here to America, they had the drum.
Right.
It was feared that they could communicate with that drum. Drum was outlawed during the entire time of slavery. No one could play the drum. When slavery ended, they got the drums back. Instead of trying to communicate with the drum, they were the first to add the drum to music. Go get Beethoven, Bach, there is no drum, there is no beat.
Yes, sir.
So then, the world picked up on the beat. That's why they claimed seven vokey dance, they didn't have no beat. We had the beat. The beat came from the drum, and wherever you go, you can tell the drum established the beat. Just want to get what happened with the drum.
I concur.
We took the drum and assigned, my ancestors, and signed it to music.
Right.
To establish the beat, and the beat goes on.
The beat goes on, yes, sir. Thank you very much.
Yes.
Thanks, Ted. Appreciate it. And before we go any further, I do want to recognize our colleague from the County Commission, Commissioner Jerry Carl.
All right.
Jerry, stand up. Somebody can see you.
Resolutions held over. Twenty-one five one one authorized contract with Gulf Coast Underground for 2016 miscellaneous storm drainage improvements and repairs.
Some move.
Second.
Discussion? I mentioned this earlier, this is drainage work that's going on citywide. We're very happy to see it starting. As you know, we have had a lot of rain recently exacerbating some of these problems, so the sooner we get started on these drainage projects, the better, so we just look forward to seeing this work begin. Anybody else? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Ordinance is being introduced, zero one zero three six through eighty-eight zero three eight.
Motion for the suspension of the rules for immediate consideration of eighty-eight zero thirty-eight, and oh one oh three six and three seven will be later for one week.
Second, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Ordinance eighty-eight zero three eight authorized conveyance of undivided interest of Medal of Honor Park to Mobile County. Some move.
Second, discussion?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Thank you very much, and President Gregory already mentioned this, but this is Medal of Honor Park Playground, and thanks to the County Commission for allocating funds, there is a nuance that the council has to go through, and I understand that the county's already done this, and that is, we are to give them an interest in the park, and that's, or on this section of the park, and that's a five percent interest because they are allocating warrant funds, and the state mandates, that's part of their agreements when they release those funds for projects. So I thank the county, particularly thank Commissioner Hudson for spearheading this and working with the city to improve Medal of Honor Park Playground. It's very exciting, so thank you, council, for also voting on this today.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Consent resolutions being introduced, zero three five one five through fifty-eight five one eight.
Motion for the suspension of the rules for immediate consideration of five one five and five one eight.
Some move.
Second, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Zero three five one five approve the mayor's appointment of Elliot Maisel to the Mobile Airport Authority.
Some move.
Second, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thirty-seven five one six recommend approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a restaurant retail liquor license for Rice Asian Grill and Sushi Bar on Government Boulevard.
Some move.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Fifty-eight five one seven and five one eight authorize removal of weed groups fifteen forty-three and fifteen forty-four.
Some move.
Check him.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Resolutions being introduced, zero one five one nine through zero one five two one.
Motion for the suspension of the rules for immediate consideration of zero one five one nine and five twenty and five twenty-one will lay over for a week.
Second.
Discussion?
We're taking five twenty-one.
Five twenty-one, I apologize, didn't give that to you.
That's the.
That's the agreement with the nurses program for senior centers.
Okay, want to suspend the rules.
Sorry, I'm sorry to include that.
Want to suspend the rules also for twenty-one five twenty-one.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm fine. Pardon me.
Oh, okay, I thought Mr. Manzi wanted to take his.
That's good.
You're all right. He's good.
Thank you.
Okay. Zero one five one nine authorized agreement with Mobile County for funding capital improvements at Medal of Honor Park. Some move.
Second.
Discussion?
Just want to again thank the County Commission for helping this come to fruition.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Zero one five two one authorized agreement with University of South Alabama for the purpose of providing learning opportunities for nursing students. Some move.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, announcements. Mr. Manzi?
Yes, Madam President, I want to just assure the residents of downtown and the individuals in this community who patronize downtown that this council, this administration, and certainly our police chief, that we are listening, that we are analyzing and studying exactly what we can do as a collective body of leaders to address the concerns relative to your safety. I have gotten a litany of emails and Facebook messages, telephone calls, texts, even a couple of visits at my home concerning this issue. It certainly is personal to me because I realize that so many individuals have expended a great deal of resources in order to rebuild our downtown, to make it robust, to make it entertaining. When you consider where it was fifteen, twenty years ago, where it was almost a ghost town with no vitality, we need to make certain that we do those things that will continue that growth while also protecting the safety of those who choose to come and spend their entertainment dollars and their dining dollars in our downtown quarter. Special thanks goes out to our downtown Mobile Alliance and everyone else who's really worked so hard to build it up where it is now. The administration and along with Chief Barber are working on some recommendations because we want it to be clear that whatever the remedy is, won't come from here. Our powers are legislative. We can enact all sorts of legislation, but the enforcement and the implementation of that legislation will come from the administration, and the enforcement from a law enforcement perspective will be headed up by Chief Barber. So the answer is not going to be found from the seven of us. We're going to listen to those who are the professionals, who are tasked with making certain that the patrons and the restaurant owners are safe in our downtown quarter, and once we receive their recommendations, then we will act in a legislative manner. But there's this perception that one or all seven of us can come up with this magic idea that will remedy all of the issues that are plaguing downtown. That isn't quite how it goes. We have professionals and the person of Chief Barber. We have professionals and the person of our Public Safety Director. Those individuals are tasked and paid greatly in order to come up with ideas to present to us for us to act on, and that's what we intend to do. This is a bold, decisive council. We are not asleep at the wheel. We're waiting on the recommendations from the administration. Once we receive them, I believe our president will announce our plan forward as to how we will proceed. So I just want to make certain for those who may have benefit of seeing this on video later tonight, and I also will release a newsletter, because this issue is sensitive near and dear to a lot of business owners in District Two. I've heard from a lot of you all, I've heard from a lot of residents who live downtown who want to see the prosperity that is presently enjoyed in downtown continued, and we want to make certain that it's an area that everyone can enjoy, but enjoy by abiding by our laws. And so we will be working, once we receive that recommendation from the administration and from Chief Barber, who are tasked with providing the leadership as it relates to answering the questions and remedying the issues in downtown Mobile.
All right, thank you, Mr. Daves.
On August the twenty-third.
Sorry.
Pardon me. August the twenty-third, we will be having a meeting of some of the residents of the Plateau Africa Town community at the Union Missionary Baptist Church on Bay Bridge Road. We will be discussing the renaming of Bay Bridge Road, and so we want to invite citizens in that community to come out and to make certain that your voices and opinions and sentiments are heard as it relates to the proposal.
All right, Mr. Daves.
Thank you, ma'am. First off, we will have a meeting of the City Council Finance Committee a week from today, which I believe is August twenty-third at two o'clock PM in the council conference room on the ninth floor. Mr. West, the finance director, will be with us, and at that time, we will be reviewing the proposed fiscal year 2017 budget. I would just like to follow up on Councilman Manzi's comments with respect to the unfortunate violence which occurred in the city over the weekend. The council has had some discussion this morning at pre-council with respect to what actions we might take in conjunction with the administration in order to address these various, this situation, which has a number of very negative ramifications attached to it. I think it's important that the administration and the council act in conjunction with each other and show a united front. I think it's important that we act quickly and decisively in this matter. We certainly want to avoid any repetition of what happened last weekend, this weekend, if there's any way we can avoid it, and I hope that we can, as I say, move ahead, perhaps with some preliminary moves soon before this weekend, and give us an opportunity to study the matter at greater length and come to a more informed decision later on about what long-term actions we need to take in order to protect the lives of our citizens and the citizens and the vitality of our downtown. Thank you, Madam President.
All right, Mr. Richardson?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to announce that on Thursday night, the eighteenth, we will be holding our Midtown Community Meeting at the Ashland Place United Methodist Church on OSHA Road. We're inviting all of our citizens in the Midtown area, please come out. We're going to have special guest coming to speak on a number of projects, including the proposed Walmart Distribution Center. We're going to be talking about jobs, we're going to be talking about the various projects that is online for that community for 2017, and about some project that is left over for 2016. So we're going to ask the citizens to come and be informed, plus, we are there to listen to you, to see what it is that you would like for us to do, so looking forward to seeing all of you at six o'clock on Thursday at the Ashland Place United Methodist Church. The Crichton Crichton Cade Group, they are here, most of them are here today. They will be meeting tonight at six o'clock at the St. Stevens AME Church on the corner Josephine and Mobile Street. We are looking good in Crichton with the sidewalk. We want to make sure that when they finish the sidewalks, that the land is even with the sidewalk. We don't want no drop-off. We want everything to be even there like the other side of the street, and everything. So far, it's looking good. Want to make sure they infill everything so it all be smooth and even. We also noticed that they have knocked down on the corner of Mobile Street and Springville Avenue, they had a nightclub on that corner there. They've already, it's already down, and they had some little trailer, and it was a service station, all of that's out. Getting ready for a major convenience store, and one of the reasons why I advocated for that, because we have the Central Plaza Towers back there on the same footprint, and it's there for seniors, and they have to go a long ways from there just to get an aspirin, and they're going to be able to come there to get food, lots of things that is convenient to them. They will be able to pick it up right there at the convenience store, and they will not have to cross the street to do it. So we had some issues getting everything cleared for them. It is cleared, and I expect construction to start in the next week or two, so that is coming. Of course, a lot of good things heading toward Crichton, you all already know what that is. The sidewalks in Tomerville on Donald Street, Glory Oak Avenue, Andrew Street, Clinton Street, that project is coming on real good. It's a slow project because they had so many big trees in the roadway that they had to clear. They got permission from the Tree Commission to remove some of those trees, and it's taking them a little while, but there is already a game changer. When you come down Donald Street, it doesn't even look like the same street anymore, and they're not even through. As they go toward Andrew Street, it's, you know, they got quite a bit of work to do up there, but they've already started down near the figure center, coming up that way with the two lanes sidewalks. So we're looking forward for the completion of that project, but it is looking good. I have one thing to say, sorry the mayor signed in here, I hope you all carry this word to the mayor. When they put the sidewalks on St. Stevens Road, and let me just say, those sidewalks are looking good, but when you get to the two thousand block up to 2017, it's on the west side. it's on the west side of St. Stephen Road where you have a service road running parallel with St. Stephen Road, a cross street from the Catholic Church over there. It's a ditch. It's a ditch separating the service road from St. Stephen Road. They haven't had any problems since I've been on the council with water because the water go right into the ditch and they're through. When they put the sidewalks in, the sidewalks is above the ground, so the water can't get to the ditch. So now, those, that property, they can't get in the car. The property is all flooded up, the water can't get to the ditch. They're going to have to come back and do that. I mean, I don't know what they were thinking about. They got some, looked like some little rubber hose they put there for the water. It won't hold the water. And the people are complaining. Every time it rains, they're complaining about all of that water when they didn't do that before. It's an engineering problem, it's something that we need to revisit. I don't know what we need to do, but they need to fix a way for that water to run over into that ditch and not back up into the yards of the citizens over there. They're very outraged over that, of course. They're trying to hold me responsible for it, I'm not taking no hit for nobody. It's not a Fred Richardson problem, it is an administrative problem, wrong to the administration. And I'm asking administration to send someone out there to figure out what they need to do, and if I have to talk about that every week until something is done, that's what I have to do. Because before those sidewalks were put up there, they had no problem. They have a major problem today, and it started with the sidewalks. So that's going to be the end of mine.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Rich.
Thank you very much. I want to remind everyone of the Public Safety Committee meeting that will take place at two o'clock this afternoon, and it is to take up the two ordinances dealing with the citizens advisory council to the police. With us will be a professor from Spring Hill College who addressed us last week, and I have sent the council his CV and some information that he's come up with to look towards a compromise. If the council will please be familiar with that, or if they have questions, go directly to him. And he will be present that you can ask. And also, we'll take up an added caveat to that meeting, and that is to talk about the downtown shooting issues, to see how the council can make some ordinances or resolutions that deal with handling and helping the administration and our police in dealing with that issue. Again, it's at two o'clock in this room, and I look forward to everyone's attendance on the council as well, if their time permits. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Small.
Thank you, Madam President. Today's agenda, the council has passed an ordinance and a resolution with partnership with the county and the city during a parking District Six Medal of Honor Park. Well, I'd like to recognize Mr. Roger Weiner from the Airport Authority. Weiner, excuse me, will you stand up? You know, I believe that District Six is just trying to copy off of District Three because we have one of the best, we have the best parking District Three, which is Doyle Park, with the help of the Airport Authority. And friends of Doyle Park is the most beautiful park in Mobile. But we're going to keep on running our race, Councilman Rich, because we're going, District Three always going to be the best.
I don't know about that.
Wow.
Also, we know that last week, that our school went back into session and had an opportunity to visit service schools in District Three. And they had, really had kicked off to a good start on last week. Also, last week, we had a community meeting, and one of the workers from the city, from the CDBG department, had stated that they was looking to move some money out of sidewalks and move it to another area. And I would like to, again, express the administration do not move that money from the sidewalks because we need those sidewalks for our kids. I have four schools on DIP, and we need, you know, sidewalks for our kids to travel safely. Fortunately enough, on Ann Street with Craighead, you know, we are now reconstructing the whole street on District Three's side. So therefore, we are having sidewalks, you know, along the District Three side of Ann Street for the kids, along in that particular area of District Three. But again, we have got to be concerned about all our kids, you know, not just in District Three, but across the city. But again, I'm asking the administration to, again, revisit that to make sure that we can take that money that's out of the CDBG and make sure that we invest, you know, into the communities where it's deserved. The DIP area, the Maysville area, the citizens out there are asking for sidewalks. And speaking of Ann Street, if you drive down Ann Street, you can't on District Three's side, not District Two, Manzi, but District Three's side. You know, you better can get down between Douglas Street and Arlington Street. You know, the construction is now going on. And every time I pass through that area, I smile because one of my goals, when I first took the seat, was to get Ann Street started in District Three. And being going into my fourth year of serving on this council, you know, I'm very proud to see that going forth. And again, the citizens on Ann Street are very proud. They know they're going to have to go through a little headache, a little heartache, you know, for the next, you know, couple of months to the next year because of all of the reconstruction, but it's going to be well worth it. And again, I'd like to thank the administration, also our city engineer, Nick, for now pushing this forward. Also, I would like to remind the citizens, as our president has stated earlier, about all the rain that's been going on. With all the rain, we got high grass and weeds. Citizens of District Three, please dial three-one-one. If you see abandoned house that no one lives at, please dial three-one-one. You know, that's going to be the simplest way. If you call me or either other council member that's up here, we also got to call three-one-one to report it. So please, if you see these properties that's growing up high, you know, past seven to ten inches, go ahead and just dial three-one-one, because that's the only way that we're going to keep our community together. If your phone, cell phone, do not dial three-one-one, you can dial two-zero-eight-five-three-one-one. Again, two-zero-eight-five-three-one-one. Again, not only the citizens of District Three, but the citizens throughout Mobile. Really, any city issue or problem that you have, please call three-one-one and report it. And also remember to give a SRO number, which stands for Search Request Order Number. That's your tracking number, you know, to keep up with the issue that you have. Again, remembering that District Three is a place where things are happening. Thank you, Madam President.
Mr. Williams?
Thank you, Madam President. I look forward to participating in today's public safety meeting. Although my schedule is limited, it'd be about an hour and a half. So I have a commitment that was in place before that. Also, leaving town tomorrow, and I'll be here for some other business in the morning, but I'm going to leave, and I'm going to go to St. Simons, Georgia, St. Simons Island, Georgia, to attend what I think is really a monumental event by a World War II veteran that passed through our town several months ago. He started his journey in San Diego. His name is Ernie Andrus. It's coast-to-coast runs, you can find him on Facebook or on the internet, anywhere, just Google it. But he came through Mobile and got to know him, we recognized him here. And he's finishing his twenty-six-hundred-mile journey that he ran every step. No bicycles, no cars, no, no help whatsoever. He himself, that'll be ninety-three on Friday, finished his three-year journey, or will finish his three-year journey on Saturday. I'm going to represent our military community, as well as the council, to congratulate him and present him with a shirt that says, "Mission accomplished." And I will pass on the greetings from Mobile, but I really look forward to that event taking place on Saturday. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Just wanted to alert the council, as well as the audience here, we received an update on the Zika virus in Mobile County. And this came from Mark Bryant, who's a public information officer over at the Health Department. And he is saying that the first travel-associated case of the Zika virus has now been reported in Mobile County. So Dr. Ischold has a news conference at noon today, and he will discuss the situation further. So the first Zika virus case reported in Mobile County. Councilman Small beat me to the punch to recognize Roger Weiner in the back. He is the Mobile Airport Authority's executive director. So Roger, congratulations on your new board member. We discussed that at pre-conference this morning, we're all happy to have Elliot on board. A couple of other announcements. I had the opportunity to visit with our I-Team yesterday, Jeff Carter and his group. And they have a wonderful presentation to show to the council and as well as people in Mobile on how they are tracking blighted properties in the city. You may drive through some neighborhoods and think that we're not making progress, but that's not true. They are making a lot of progress, and they have the statistics to show it. They can tell you where the homes are, what the status is on those homes, and where we are in trying to get them resolved. It was very impressive. So I look forward to having them come and make that same demonstration, or presentation, rather, to us here at a council meeting. They have also just received an award. I won't steal the mayor's thunder on that one, but it's really a great award, and they're doing wonderful work over there. So look forward to having them come to a council meeting. On Saturday, we will hold a back-to-school rally for the Mobile Terrace community. It's a little late, kids are already in school, but they certainly need the supplies. So we will be out at McCants Chavers Park on Saturday morning to give out the school supplies. Look forward to seeing everyone from the community there. Joyce Chavers and her group always do a wonderful job in taking care of kids in the community. And last but not least, Old Shell Road resurfacing is coming right along. The rain certainly posed a lot of problems for us. When it's raining, we can't lay asphalt. And when the pavement is grooved in order to get ready for the asphalt, it is much more vulnerable, if you will, to potholes, and we have seen some of those develop over the last few days where the pavement has been grooved. But they are putting some temporary patches on those potholes, and when they get down to the area for the permanent asphalt, those will be repaired permanently. So Old Shell Road is coming along. I've gotten some responses back from newsletters, and people are so happy that that road is finally smooth. I think folks who have been driving up and down Old Shell Road forever and complaining about needing new shocks are now going to be very happy because it is a smooth ride. So with that, if there are no other announcements, Mr. Manzi?
Yes ma'am, briefly.
Okay.
I just want to recognize three individuals who are responsible for the redevelopment of eleven-fifty-one Dolphin Street. Several months ago, there was a proposed use for this great, it was a former church, the First Church of Christ, right there on the corner there of Dolphin Street. And there was a use proposed, the community was totally adverse to, this council was adverse to. They have it now, and will be turning into a medical facility. Ms. Christie Essis, I hope I'm saying that correctly, Mr. Men Cummings is with her along with Ms. Sarah Sharon Wright. If they could stand, I just want to recognize them for all that they're doing to transform that community, transform that corner of Dolphin Street, and really turn it into something that this entire city will get use out of. And I just want to publicly recognize you all.
Yeah, thank you. All right, with that, Mr. Richardson, you have a motion?
Yes ma'am, Madam President. A motion that we recess until tomorrow.
The motion is to recess this meeting until eight AM tomorrow morning in the council conference room on the ninth floor. Is there a second? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We'll see you all bright and early in the morning.